Those that are watching from home, hello. We have a proclamation right off the bat for Steve Hexum for RagBri. He'll be receiving that. We'll also be doing a couple of Mayor's Awards and then it brings us to number three, which will be a public hearing in consideration of sale of property locally known as 209 South Gunnison Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisland, you got on that?
This property is again located 209 South Gunnison Street located between Smith and Division on the west side of the road. This is one the city acquired through the abandoned building program. It's that vacant for awhile. It is one that we've sold previously a couple of times. Unfortunately, the purchasers weren't able to follow through and meet the requirements. And that's partly why we have those in place, that we want someone to complete the process and rehab the house and not let it sit. But we do have another bidder for this property. He, the current bidder, does live across the street on Gunnison, so very motivated to see his neighborhood improved and feel that if he is the one that does acquire, certainly would follow through with it.
Eric, has there been any improvement to the property through the number of times it has been sold?
There's been some stuff cleaned out here and there and a little work done here and there, but nothing substantial.
Okay. And do we require any vetting as far as financial ability from people that are allowed to bid on these properties?
We do not.
Is that a step that we want to take?
It's something we could do. It'd be a holdup just, I guess, what those parameters are and...
It's been sold like three times.
Most of the time, people are doing it themselves or doing it on their own, sometimes to live in, sometimes to rent out, but...
The way I see it is some people use this as an opportunity as well. And to me, if we put that stipulation in, I think it's going to remove some of the people that would actually have an opportunity to move into the home for me. And what I've seen through just with my eight years on the council, that it doesn't seem like it's an issue with having to resell, even though that does happen from time to time.
I understand your point, but regardless whether you're going to live in it, whether you're going to rent it, whatever you're going to do with it, you're still going to have to have enough capital, whether it's from the bank or saving, checking in savings account, to be able to go in and do what we have an expectation to be done within a reasonable amount of time. Otherwise, we're going to take it back and next thing you know, it's back on our docket and we're selling it again.
I think the previous two purchasers would have qualified or met those needs. There was just some external circumstances, one with family members that they thought they're going to do the work and one with a lot of other projects that they just didn't prioritize this one, so...
So we're not giving the money back, right?
No.
All right.
It's non-refundable.
Exactly. And that's the safety that we set in place, so it always seems to work itself out. But to the person that is going to purchase 209 South Gunnison, I know the person that actually has the bid on it, I know what his intents are, so I'm just glad to see us moving forward with this program and seeing somebody that's interested.
Sold in excess of 60 or so over the last five or six years and was only this property and I think one other lot are the only ones that have come back to us.
It's not a problem. We don't have to fix it. Okay. Thank you.
Good questions, Will.
Are we satisfied?
Satisfied.
All right. Number four is a resolution awarding contract for the 2019 RecPlex Road Extension Project.
This project was one that we've talked about in the past. It is a, it's West Burlington Broadway extension and then turns and goes east-west on Hinkle Drive that was recently named. We went out to bid. The estimate from the engineer was 1.24 million. The lowest bid back from Jones Contracting was $969,000, so fairly significantly under the estimate amount. We have funding sources of TIF. We have a RISE grant that's $418,000. And then there was some funds for some of the parking that we were doing with the indoor rec facility that was also at $150,000. So with some of the reductions in the overall costs, I could, you know, Jim and I kind of spoke about that money maybe be reapportioned to something else, so...
Okay. Does it make sense to put it back into some more parking, which is something we had talked about originally?
Into more parking?
On the, at the RecPlex?
I'm not sure. We'd have to have a conversation about that. But I'm glad to see a bid come in pretty positive.
Very good one. Thanks. We satisfied?
Yes.
Okay. Let's move to the consent agenda versus a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Are we good? Okay. Number two is a resolution approving refund of liquor license for Roters Pit Stop Doing Businesses, Roters Pit Stop Inc. Good. Number three is a resolution establishing a blind person in area zones in the 1300 and 1400 block of South Lee Brick Street.
This is me. This is a kind of a non-typical sign that you see installed. We have some deaf children signs in town. This will be like the second blind person in area sign that we've had requested in the last 10 years. The property owner pays for the sign, for the materials, and then our staff installs it, so that's something that the city covers. So that's something you typically see in an area. I don't, there's no real issue with it, so I recommend approval of that.
Okay.
Are we all good with this recommendation?
Perfect.
All right. Number four is a resolution waiving the 2019 rental permit fee for the Burlington area homeless shelter. We've done that every year. That was part of our commitment from the city to help out the homeless shelter as they work on their own. Go ahead.
So, yeah, their rental permits are on a three-year cycle. They're an eight-unit complex. It's $380. Previously waived the fee in 2016, but the fee waivers for each specific year because discussion was you can't buy in future councils, but did discuss that. We'd bring that back every time. Kathy Johnson, the current director, wasn't able to be here tonight, but did email and requested the waiver of the fees and appreciates all that the city does for them, so...
Eric, what's the follow-up on that? Once we do a rental permit, do we, I mean, do we do a reinspection even though we're waiving the fee or is it just automatic?
Yeah, it's still, it's still the inspection, reinspection, have to meet all the requirements. The only thing is they don't pay a fee. They still get issued a permit and there's still an expiration date in three years and we'd bring this back again in three years if the councils willing.
Good. Thanks.
Council satisfied?
Yes.
All right. Number five is a resolution adopting the personnel manual for non-union employees.
So we approved this a couple of months ago. We had one change to it that we needed to add. It's on page three. There is a discussion with the fire department on how we handle battalion chiefs that work an extra 24-hour shift. This happens very, not often, I should say, but it does happen sometimes when we have enough injuries. And this is a case where the battalion chief is off a shift and we can't find a captain to fill in or a lieutenant, so then another battalion chief has to come on that shift. They're going to still work their same every third day. This is taking on a whole nother day and they're exempt employees, so they don't, there's no overtime for them, there's nothing. So we worked it out with the attorney and the city manager. So the line that was added on page three is that the fire battalion chiefs will be paid an additional 800 stipend if they are required to work a full 24-hour shift in addition to the employees' regular scheduled work shift. So that's what's got added to this. Everything else is the same. We wanted effective July 1st also, so, but...
I had one question.
Sure.
So I read it the other day, and one thing that stood out to me for military members, it says temporary military members employed less than six months are eligible for...
You're looking at a different, not, you're looking at a different part of the non-union?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was page seven.
Okay.
Employees employed temporarily for six months or less who are members of the National Guard, organized reserves, or any component in the military that are deployed or given orders elsewhere. What, how's that work?
I mean, I'd have to do a little research on that. I guess, what do you say? We're allowing them, it says, without loss of status or efficiency.
But do they have to work six months in order to achieve that status or to achieve the ability to do that?
I think a lot of this terminology is all federal law.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're following the federal law when it comes to the military leave.
Okay.
So, but, I mean, I can double-check that for you, but...
Well, the reason I ask is, so for example, if somebody got out of the Navy and they were an MP and they come to work here and get hired, you know, two months in and then they join the reserves and get deployed or something, are they going to lose their employment because they weren't here for six months yet? That was my only concern.
Yeah, like I said, I can double-check with that.
Okay. Thanks, Steph.
Well, it says temporary for six months or less should be entitled to leave of absence.
Yeah, it's almost like the government saying you've got to be here six months or more for us to provide you that benefit. Yeah, because then it's probably, because most, almost all our positions are probationary for the six months too. So, but like I said, all of that wording is, I mean, we're following the federal law, so that must, they must allow it to, or that you've got to be here six months.
Okay.
But if I find out anything different, I'll let you know.
Okay. Thanks.
Any questions on the stipend or? It's been reviewed by the fire department and everybody down there is happy with the change, so...
Everybody's groovy?
Yeah.
Thank you, Steph. Number six, set date for public hearing August 5th, 2019, for consideration of a sale of property located south of the property locally known as 1220 Mount Pleasant Streets in DeBurlington, Iowa, with conditions that'll be coming forward. You want to say anything on that?
It's a portion of excess right away with Robert's Tire that they've been using for parking and kind of discovered with the bridge project.
Okay. You guys ready to go into doing the ride-on? Okay. Number one is a request from county attorney to consider designated, are you eyeballing me right now?
No.
Okay. Number one is a request from county attorney to consider designated four parking spots on Valley Street for county attorney official business only.
Good evening. I am requesting the four spots...
Sorry, can you give us your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Lisa Schaefer, Des Moines County Attorney. I'm requesting the four spots immediately adjacent to the south side of our building, which would be the north side of Valley Street, for county attorney only parking. Obviously, during the flood, we all experienced parking nightmares. Unfortunately, us as a government building, we had no ability to have people who come into our building to do business have any place to park. In fact, I had victims of homicides, survivors of homicides come in and they had to drive around for 20 minutes finding a place to park to come in to sign some forms. So we're asking for two, at least four spots. We would like to have all four of them ideally. One, we would like to designate for our investigator. We have an investigator on staff. He does not drive his personal vehicle. He actually parks his personal vehicle at the sheriff's office lot and picks up the county-owned vehicle. The reason we would like a spot for him is he is in and out of the office throughout the day. He does a multitude of things for us, from picking up criminal history reports at DESCOM to dropping off reports at West Burlington Police Department, looking for witnesses or victims who otherwise might not want to be found. He's also always out delivering subpoenas. I know during the flood especially, he would spend a good portion of his day just driving around trying to find a place to park. It would be beneficial for him because he come and goes, comes and goes frequently throughout the day for him to have a spot designated just for that county vehicle for investigator purposes. We also have law enforcement that come in while the police department is not that far away. They generally will walk down if we are doing trial prep with officers, such as I was doing today. They generally try to park in front of our building and if we have, we often have more than one. And so that's why I'm asking for all four. We also have collections program that we run out of our office. We have people coming in, I would say probably between five and eight a day, sometimes more, coming in to pay on their overdue fines and collections. Again, normally, it's not that big of an issue, but whenever we have a flood where parking is at an issue or for whatever reason that the north auditorium lot gets taken out, those spots fill up and they fill up quickly and they're full all day long. If we have special events, it's not just, you know, the natural disasters, but special events. I know we don't have steamboat days this year, but who knows? It may come back. We would just like to have those four spots for our office designated for our business only. We also have an on-call attorney. That person is in and out throughout the day because they handle a lot of last-minute things. Our staff actually parks either in the north auditorium lot or during the flood, I required them to park at the sheriff's office lot. Generally, not a problem when it's, but it is four to five blocks away. And sometimes it may require one of the felony attorneys going to a homicide scene. So we're having to walk, drive, walk all the way down there, get going. Sometimes time is of the essence in us getting there to determine what needs to be done, which is why we would like all four of those spots, if at all possible.
Mr. Tisdale, do you have something you want to share with us?
Just, we have a parking, downtown parking committee. This is addressed in our parking study as far as a request of designated on-street parking use and talked about having a process of application or request or review by that parking committee. We do have a meeting this week. We could review and bring back a recommendation from that parking committee that was formed by the council at the next work session if you desire.
I would love to, I would love to see that. I would also like to address you because you are on this work session on the docket, so I can, we can address you as well. You had me at hello. Now, not unforced spots. You had me at hello on two. The four, I really need to, I need to let that marinate, but I get it. You know, everything you're saying, it makes sense. It's not like you're asking for something that is way far out there. No, it, the more that we can run efficiently as a city in every aspect, I mean, that's just what's best. If we can set ourselves up in a position to be successful, that makes sense. We don't want to do something, set any precedence by any means, but at the same time, again, we're supposed to find a way to work together to be as efficient as we possibly can that saves taxpayers' money. So I hear what you're saying. The four spots, I would like to hear what everybody else says and all of that good stuff, but just from me, I'm just speaking for the council, I'm just speaking as me. I'm all in at least two. I am. Even if somebody came back and said, no, we just don't think they should. I just don't think it, I think it makes sense to at least have two spots. I don't know about the four. That's where I'm at. So I'm just saying, you're down here, so if you guys have something to say, you can talk. But we're not going to make any, we're not going to, obviously making decisions tonight and we're going to be waiting until that, until that comes back.
Well, did you think, do you think there's a problem with enforcement as far, we were discussing earlier?
When we had the parking issues, when both auditorium lots were full, I can personally attest to seeing the same four vehicles sitting from that building when I got there at quarter to eight, when I went at lunch, still sitting there when I got back from lunch and were there when my staff was leaving.
Okay. Let's see, for me, this is one of those things where I don't want to pass a policy that is designed to combat natural disasters like we had, because it's not something that's going to occur all the time. We've talked about adjusting the timeframe, that vehicles are allowed to stay parked in one spot at any given minute, so I don't know that I'm comfortable doing this until we've made those adjustments and figuring out what those impacts are. I'm not opposed to designating a spot or two, but we're really opening the door for the potential to have problems because we have people that are here every week, business owners, residents, that one spot, and I can understand...
And I respectfully want to interject, we're a government building. We're not a private enterprise, so I can't go to the Des Moines County taxpayers and say, I need two spots at the Two Rivers Lot behind us at however many hundreds of dollars a year. So this is really my only avenue for the people that we serve to be able to park in front of our building without having to go search for parking spaces.
Yeah, understandable, but at the end of the day, bought a building without parking anyways, so, and whether that was...
I unfortunately did not have anything to do with that.
Fair enough. Fair enough. But so, but to automatically say that I'm going to support this at this point, I don't, I can't do that, not without making the adjustments that we've talked about making and seeing what the impact of that's going to be.
I guess, I, you know, I had, I guess I somewhat echo both of you. I can see the validity of it, however, I do have some concerns with it. Quite honestly, I'm not a big proponent, no offense, chief, of the parking spaces in front of the PD or even outside of city hall here. I'm not a big fan of those. However, I can see where your point is. I do, do know that during the flood that we were admittedly lax in enforcing the parking. I kind of echo what Matt said we've discussed, maybe shortening up that window for people to park there. And as we ramp up our enforcement, hopefully we'll get those people that are squatting in a spot all day long moving. So I would think we really should wait until we hear the parking committee's recommendations and then we'll circle back to this and talk again.
I'd like to see those two. One thing I would say that I would definitely support is a, I don't even know what the term is, but a spot where you have a 10-minute or 15-minute parking, so for people who constantly come in.
The only concern we would have is sometimes it's victims who are coming in to prepare for a trial and that sometimes takes closer to an hour.
Right. But I'm talking about the people who need to stop and then sign a form or make a payment. We do have areas in downtown where we have some of those spots kind of sporadically located. I don't know that we have any in that area. I would definitely support the idea of having one.
I think the closest one is the post office.
Okay.
Which for some of our folks that come in who are disabled, that can be a little bit challenging to want.
But again, I think I'd have more support for something like that at this point in time than designating four spots for your office building at this point.
I was wondering if any other staff had input or anything to...
I would think the biggest struggle that you've probably seen down there is not only the flood events, but also the hole in that storm sewer. It has reduced the use of that parking lot for much longer than just the flood. It was even last fall. So I don't want to say that there's light at the end of the tunnel once that gets fixed, but once that lot becomes fully operational again, I think it should ease your concern. Not that I'm not questioning your request or anything, but I think that once that gets fixed and once we get cleaned up, you should see some allevement of parking concerns down there.
Yeah, because it's not easy to traverse right now, because I, at a downtown event, I parked over there, I thought, oh, I've made a mistake, because getting across those tracks with the big hole was a problem.
And that's why I just don't feel like now's the time to make that decision. I'd like to see that project completed. We've talked about adjusting the time before parking spots. Once the flood stuff is all cleaned up and people are parking back in those lots again, I'd like to see what effect that has on your office before we decide to do that.
Fair enough.
Well, and I would say that I would be interested to see what our, the parking committee has to say or their input, just because we have that committee in place for reasons like this. So, but I would, I would say that any, any sort of governmental building office should have some sort of designated parking, so I'll be interested to see what that committee has to say on this.
And we would be happy, we would be happy with two. At this point, it's better than what we have now, where it's just really a challenge. In fact, a couple of weeks ago, Sheriff John Stone had to literally park his patrol vehicle in the middle of the street with the lights on because he needed to come in and speak to me and drop some things off and could not park at all, anywhere close. The flooding made it more prevalent, but it's an issue that I was observing since I took office in January. That just made it more pronounced, but it's been an issue that we've been battling since I was in office, I've come into office. I don't obviously know what was going on before that, but it's been an ongoing issue that just made it more pronounced.
Absolutely.
We've got, we've got some information coming back next week and then we'll, we'll deal with it.
In two weeks.
Yeah, in two weeks, right. And we'll deal with it and we'll see where, we'll see where everybody stands. But again, I already know where I'm at. That's why I just went ahead and spoke. I'm down for two. I feel like that makes sense.
I could live with two.
And, yeah, I, doing four, I do, I would have an issue, but I think that, I think in a couple of weeks, it will make sense to more people, I think, and I'm hoping they can get your two spots, so...
Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you. Just wanted to add from the finance department, Annette handles all the leases. So Maine and Valley, we do have eight spots available for lease. They lease from 7:30 to 5:00 quarterly for $82.50. So also, or you can do 24 hours for $120 for a quarter. So that is an option. I mean, I know, again, it's taxpayer money, but if you have the efficiency of somebody just having to walk a half a block instead of walking blocks, it might be something they want to consider, because we do have parking there available.
Okay.
That could be, you know, their, their spot if they wanted to do it 24 hours or the 7:30 to 5:00 is a little, it costs less money, so that's out there.
You know, you know why Stephanie handles figures and dollars?
She's good at it.
Because she knows how to do it. That's right. That's right. Okay. Thanks for coming down, guys. Appreciate you, Stone. Always a pleasure to see you. I think I just saw a guy that looked like you in Walmart the other day in Walmart parking lot. He looked just like you, man, except he had uglier legs. So, yeah, let's move before this really turns up. Thanks for coming down. Number two is the downtown crosswalks. Lady of Distinction, Tammy McCoy.
So what I would like to get permission for is to make the crosswalks interesting. We've been doing this during the farmer's market with chalk, and so these are a few of the things we did. It's some spray chalk, some chalk you can use with a paintbrush or just regular chalk. And the community has responded very favorably. They love the murals that we've been putting and we, I think there's some comments that we included in some of these pictures. I'm not sure if they'll come up or not, but yeah, that's what this is, just the Facebook comments or the emails that we've been getting back that people are excited about a little color downtown. And so what I'm like, wanting to get permission for is to use permanent paint on these murals instead of just chalk that washes away after a few rains. And we'd really like to get permission to do it in time for RagBri. And what we're asking is the crosswalks on Jefferson Street at Third, Fourth, and Fifth. I would be happy with just one crosswalk at each of those intersections, but if you want to give me all four at each intersection, I know I can find artists to make them beautiful.
What's the, what type of paintings are you planning on putting in these?
Something like what you see here, just murals up to the artist. And if you would want like a picture of what's going to happen before it gets on there, we could certainly submit those.
I think I'd be okay with that as long as it's actually overseen by Nick's office, because...
I'm actually the one that reached out to Tammy about doing it. So Rachel, Rachel called me and asked me if it was something that we could do by RagBri. And I said, well, it's not something my staff is going to be able to touch. We have yellow and white. Not that some of them aren't creative to be able to do that, but they offer much more of an opportunity to do that. The only thing I would want is to make sure the paint isn't too slick when it gets wet. So I would just want to know what kind of paint's going down, but, and then it's just kind of a coordination thing between us and the artist on closing down the crosswalks.
That, and there's not going to be any confusion. I mean, there's any safety issues we need to worry about. Well, that's what I was just going to ask. One of the pictures goes over the white stripe and are we going to be bordered by the white stripes or are we, any concerns about that?
I would prefer to have the white lines shown, but that, it's not necessar, it's not a big necessity. If you've been, not, another one that, another city that's done it is in Des Moines on Grand Avenue. They've done something fairly similar to this, a little bit different, where it seems to be like you're trying to follow the white lines. They don't even have lines. They just have kind of an overtop view of people walking. So it, you know, crosswalks can be anything between, you know, bars that are painted, so I think this fits fine. I have no problem with this.
I'm okay with you having all of them in downtown. But by RagBri, though.
I don't know that we'll get them all done by RagBri, but I think we could get at least one in each intersection done by RagBri and then if we could continue working on them. My idea is to try and get them done during farmer's market because the street's already closed off then. And then there's people down there that like to watch it happen, so... Oh, yeah.
Are we having issues getting park benches painted still or no?
I'm not sure.
Downtown Partners, is that Steve?
Yeah.
I think I just want to make one more comment to Tammy is I'm 100% okay with it. The only thing that I would ask is that the coordination of the crosswalk being closed and what's going to be painted go through Nick's office. and what's gonna be painted go through Nick's office, that way.
Okay. We will send pictures of the proposal for the murals. And like I said, I think we're gonna try and do it during farmer's market when it's already closed down anyway, so we don't have to. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And for the record, Downtown Partners Design Committee loves this idea, so we're really excited about working together on it. And we, we also recognize that in a few years, it'll all be torn out for the Tiger Grant and, and for that project. And, you know, will, remains to be seen depending on traffic in the, the winter, how long the, how long it holds up, so. Uh, as far as benches, A, it's been a real difficulty. And thank you for your contact. And what we've kinda worked on with them is, they came up with a cost that it takes them to strip and prime each bench, which is considerable. And so, and I know, I've actually worked with Tammy a little bit on this. Downtown Partners is not a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, but the Art Center is, so trying to think of a way that we might be able to have that entity do that work and then be able to write off the, their cost for the Art Center, not for Downtown Partners. Actually, I have two benches that are out as of last fall that they're supposed to be painted. They were supposed to be painted last fall. The people still have them. Part of the difficulty is moving these things because it takes, it's a four-person job. So, we have to move them from onsite to where they would be primed, then move them to the painter's location, then move them back. And my back is not always up to that, so that's part of it. But I do hope that we'll have two more before RagBri. And then I know there's one, I got contacted the other day about, one that has a broken board over by F&amp;M, and I contacted Braden about that, so.
Well, I love the crosswalk idea, but also I've loved the park benches, so I just don't wanna, I don't want us to see, do one and forget the other.
No, exactly. And, you know, we, we just, again, kind of with the Art Center, worked on the piano piano, and I think we're gonna try to do another one of those as well, so.
So, and if you really like all these ideas, I have one more.
Come to the microphone.
But wait, there's more.
Come to the microphone over in the station.
That includes the park benches and a few of the bike racks and the street signs, whatever you want. But I saw this cool idea where an artist goes and paints shadows connected to all these fixtures that aren't really the shadow of the item, that kinda just plays with your head a little bit, like a park branch, bench that you look like a, a dog walking, or just mailboxes. There's a shadow painted on the sidewalk that looks like a monster. So, that would be something fun to think about too, once we start getting the park benches there and then maybe doing the shadows along there. I mean, just some fun things to bring interest to Burlington and get people interested in coming and seeing all the weird things we got going on.
Absolutely.
But we do know what a mailbox is.
Onsor. All right. Well, thank you, Lady of Distinction. We appreciate you coming down. What was the date that you won that? What was that? What month was that?
April.
April, okay. So, those of you that don't know, they're watching at home, that was 2019, April, Woman of Distinction winner, so we appreciate you coming down. Thank you.
So, unless there's any dissent, I would...
No, I think it's, I think it's a great idea. I think it'll bring a lot of attention to the downtown area and it'll definitely highlight when it's being done.
You're working on it, Nick. You worked magic, man. But yeah, that's, everybody's good on that? We're all good?
Absolutely.
All right. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to our last update. RagBri.
Nobody's, not everyone at once.
Don't rush the stage.
It's going good? Is that it?
I guess, I guess that's me.
It's on you then.
I, I serve as the Transportation Committee Head for RagBri. But I guess I don't know what the update really truly involves, to be honest. I don't know what the, the agenda item was entailing. As you, as you know, RagBri is coming into town Friday, July 26th. I think the biggest thing from a city perspective that we want to try and probably warn people about is the road closures and the kinda the, the detouring or redirecting of traffic. West Avenue and then Mason Road, we'll, we'll see a lot of bike traffic. And so, we're trying, we're hoping that a lot of, we'll send traffic to, to Division Street. And then the parties downtown, on Jefferson Street and then at the Riverfront. So, we've communicated with the folks up at the chamber about what RagBri expectations are for the Riverfront. And we're trying to give them as much as we can, but we are limited. The port and the auditorium will not be something that the buildings that they can use. There's still a lot of cleanup that has to, to get done before we would allow any sort of people, traffic in there. I don't know what else is really to update, to be honest. Is there any questions on RagBri, I guess?
I do have a question. I was wondering if there was going to be any sort of like map or something to put out to the public?
There is maps. There is maps, yep.
And is that found on our website?
Not on ours.
I was just thinking about road closure or some things like that.
It's on Greater Burlington Partnership.
So, we will do press releases as far as the road closures, but ours maybe isn't as friendly as what they have on, at, at the chamber. I know that Dustin there is going to be putting, pushing some media out there about kind of what's gonna happen with RagBri, so. There's more to come on that. There'll be a lot of announcements over the next two weeks prior to, so.
I get a somewhat of a RagBri question because I think we're gonna have, I've had a bunch of calls with Marina people wanting dock that day. Is there a possibility we're gonna put the public boat docks in besides just the unloading and unloading docks? The Mike Schrader, whatever they refer those to, public docks?
The ones that John Fai typically puts us in, 'cause they're too large for us to handle.
Yeah. Is there, has anybody talked to them? Are they looking at it?
I have not talked to John. We just got ours in last week after we got a lot of the stuff mucked out of, of the north boat ramp. I can, I can put a call into John to see if there's something that would be going in.
Yeah, it might be worthwhile, 'cause I think you're gonna have people coming from both directions for that day, so if we can get it done.
Any other questions?
I, I, I wish I knew more on what was, what was, that, that agenda item was for. I guess I didn't have a whole lot of lead up to under it, but Major Grimshaw's been kinda the, the city ringleader as far as coordinating everything for RagBri, so, you know, he's got it handled.
Yeah, I think, I think it's in good hands too, so. And the, the maps are relatively easy to find from, you know, GreaterBurlington.com, so.
Are we satisfied?
Yes.
Okay. We've come to the end, everybody. Mr. Tisdale, anything in closing?
No.
Okay. Mr. Billups?
I have nothing. Reserve the right.
Miss Wilson. Yes, you did. I loved it when you did that.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Council Rinker?
I will not be here the next two weeks. I'll try and call in next week, so I'll see you in, I think, two weeks.
You'll be drinking margaritas already then. Mr. McGregor?
Uh, you should see some activities, some pretty good work towards cleaning the Riverfront up. Four Seasons Excavating is taking the HESCO barriers down and moving the sand. They started some today, but a lot of the, the movement will be tomorrow. So, there'll be some activity in and around the downtown and they'll be coming down. They'll drop a lot of the sand off at Public Works. We can reuse that, so. With that stuff gone, then we'll be able to, to do some more flushing and cleaning of the pavement type. And then we will start cleaning the, the top wall. We don't have our disinfectant in until probably later this week, so we will start spraying that and taking that down as well and try to coordinate some sod replacement where, where the trees are. Try and get that done prior to, to the big events that'll happen down there, so. Things are moving. The auditorium is probably the biggest outlier. We got some report back on what the costs are, but the boiler system is shot. And then we have, our elevator inspection was done today, so we kinda have a, kind of an understanding of what needs to be cleaned and the, and the cost, but we still have some pretty big outliers that, that'll come together here in the next week, so. I'll try and update, I'll try and give a timeline of expectations as well as far as what cleanup is. You know, the depot should start tomorrow. As far as cleanup, that cleanup is relatively mild. There is just a little bit of water on the bottom, so. But the port and auditorium are definitely the bigger concerns, but, so I'll give you, I'll give an update here later in the week if I can. So, that's all I have.
Okay.
I guess I do have one thing. We will not have a meeting on the 22nd, don't forget, because that's the, we've got five, so you're, you're okay?
Sound good.
Yeah, me too. And then, radio.
Red, it's council talk, is, well, that's, I was just remembering that, so.
Is it this one?
This Wednesday, nine o'clock.
So, I will not be able to?
I will not be able to.
I'm down. I can do it.
Unless, unless it's...
I was gonna try to put it on peanut butter, but she's not even here. I'm your man.
If you, if you have a prior engagement, I can...
I don't think I do.
If you do, if, anyway, reach out to me.
Okay, okay. Are we good? Oh, yeah, just wanna say congratulations to Lea. She's now taken over at the new position at the radio station. She's switched spots, so we're used to the face, but a different, a different spot. Now she's holding the microwave, so I just want to wish you the best. And it's good to see Craig here tonight with his hot legs. Craig, it's always a, it's always a pleasure. Not really, but anyways, I'm just playing. It always is. So, if there's nothing else...